...in our consideration, so if you feel like you forgot something, don't worry, you can fill in writing and send it in. And it's going to work just the same way. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Peggy Powis, P-O-W-I-S. I am not data. I am not an asset. I am not a trend. I was the pharmacy cashier with my husband, who was the pharmacist, for 10 years here on the peninsula. And we know all of these people by name. So, Mr. Carbono, thank you for bringing this, as Jerry said, to the peninsula. Lincoln County Health, thank you for bringing the possibility of a certificate of need hearing to us. I am not testifying today for me and my husband. That will be submitted in writing. I am reading a testimony from Priscilla Frazier on behalf of her husband, Bob, who was one of my favorite customers because we share a birthday. And of course, you know, when you go to the pharmacy, that's the first thing they ask you, what's your birthday? So, March 17th, if you want to send him a card, or me. "Good morning. My name is Priscilla Frazier, and I live in Booth Bay. Both my husband and I have had poor experiences with Miles Memorial Hospital. Mine was two 10-hour stays in the ER. The first, I got dressed and finally got attention. The second it took, repeated requests for a glass of water and a commode, and I was insulted by a very rude nurse." Our doctor then was at the Miles Medical Building. This has left us with the apparent alternative that we will have to seek hospital attention further from home. My husband will be 93 in March and has Alzheimer's. His December 2012 admission to Miles brought a transfer for a presumed three weeks of rehab when I said he was not to go. He had a UTI. His metformin was removed as a test and forgotten to be replaced. He was given his first injection of insulin, a single unit, several times instead. Upon returning my questioning, the St. Andrews doctor replaces metformin. There was no need for insulin. His last admittance to Miles was Columbus Day weekend this year for what was diagnosed as a minor gallbladder flare-up." She goes on and on, which will be in written testimony. I will tell you that the primary care physician reinstated Bob's metformin and Airecept. My husband and I, our children and grandchildren, have all had surgeries and been patients at St. Andrews. We need hospital beds here in our community. The family care center next door to St. Andrews houses, the doctor that most residents see on a regular basis. They know their patients are readily available and should have put input in their care. Close-to-home patients will have a quicker recovery with more visits from family and friends. As we've all been trying to say, help us heal here at home. And as the daughter-in-law of parents that we moved here from Florida because we had a hospital and a continuum of care, we are begging for those beds. We are begging for those beds.
Donna Jones.
My name is Donna Jones. I've lived here all my life. I have had surgery after tampering scalding miles, but I had my rehab done at St. Andrews. It was so much easier for my family to come see me. Otherwise, I don't even know where I would be. And the second, my mother-in-law, she had to go way up to North Whiteville for rehab because Miles decided to close this place. There were nowhere to close bed, and she liked it there, but we couldn't see her that often. It cost too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Hagan.
Welcome, Mr. Carbono, to the Booth Bay region. My name is Tom Hagan, spelled H-A-G-A-N. I reside in Booth Bay in a 160-year-old farmhouse we bought over 25 years ago. I am the CEO of Action Ear, Inc., the third high-tech company I have co-founded. The first two were successful, and we have hopes for the third as well. I've also been chair of the Board of Trustees of National Braille Press. You've heard today from Lincoln County Healthcare. Their position can be paraphrased as certificate of need? We don't need no thinking certificate of need. We pay no attention to the wishes of the citizens of the Booth Bay region or to Maine's Department of Health and Human Services. We do what we want to do. You're hearing from residents unhappy with what they do. Eighty-five percent of them voted to keep the hospital open. Karen Ignani, lobbyist for the health insurers, said that the flood of hospital mergers would be attributed to efficiency, and that's false. But my purpose today is different. I want to speak about the financial performance of St. Andrews Hospital. Many people have been fooled into believing that St. Andrews was a money loser. These include many who want to see the hospital reopened, some newspapers, and some state legislators. Jim Donovan of LCH, in a letter mailed to all residents of the region, said that St. Andrews loses money. This was untrue. Were people fooled by that lie? You bet. The Booth Bay Register ran a Page 1 lead story in April with a headline saying, "St. Andrews Has Long-Term Losses." Robert Splain, Booth Bay Harbor selectman, reported his concern about St. Andrews losses to a committee of legislators in Augusta. Mark Twain once said, "It is easier to fool people than to convince them they have been fooled." To fool people, you just have to cite some of the line, as though it was the bottom line. It's as easy as A-B-C. If the bottom line is line A, all you have to do is cite line B or line C, as though it was line A. You can hoodwink people into knowing, quote-unquote, that St. Andrews loses lost money. It didn't. They have been fooled. It's easy, as Mark Twain said. Don't be fooled by Maine Health, LCH. LCH's own audited financial statements show that St. Andrews was consistently profitable over the past 11 years. In fact, it accumulated profits that increased its retained earnings by over $5 million. You don't have to be a CPA to find St. Andrews' bottom line. It's the line at the bottom. And it shows that St. Andrews has been consistently profitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Nancy Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Carbono, for coming down here to talk about the certificate of need filed by Lincoln County. Since pedigrees seem to be in order, I've been coming here since I was two months old. I've been practicing here since 1997, and since 1999, I have been the only independent of Lincoln County physician in the Booth Bay region. Contrary to Ms. Griffin's belief, some of us are on call for our patients 24/7. I am. And I'm never going to get all this in in three minutes. I'm not even going to try. But basically, Lincoln County created a self-fulfilling prophecy. Low utilization because the services will remove the exact reverse of the Field of Dreams concept. Build it, and they will come; take it away, and they can't use it. Surgery went down. Nobody mentioned that one of the reasons surgical cases went down was because the operating room was closed for three months in the summer of 2009 due to a lack of anesthesia coverage, which doubtless skewed the figures downwards. Orthopedics, Steve Katz came down here Wednesdays for years. And then, after the amalgamation, Miles started sending an orthopod down once a week on Wednesday. So, it didn't really expand the services. It just expanded who you might want to see. After patients started coming, skilled patients started coming from Damascata, I was still admitting patients at that point. I admitted several patients from Damascata for skilled. And as soon as a bed opened at Cove's Edge, they requested to be transferred back. They wanted to be near their families and friends in Damascata, and nobody can blame them. Unfortunately, the acutely ill people from the Booth Bay region didn't get a choice. And now, nobody from the Booth Bay region really gets a choice. Plus, Lincoln County may have reduced their own costs. But as a previous witness said, the cost has been shifted and diffused to the point where it is not possible to quantify it. At $6 or $8 per visit to Miles with a tank of gas, how can we add that up? Should we change the free bed fund to the free gas fund? I will be submitting additional remarks in writing. But the certificate of need application has a fit, willing, and able section. I sincerely doubt, given their performance, that Lincoln County is fit, willing, and able to run the healthcare system that has been created. What they have done with respect to St. Andrews may be legal, but it's not right. It's wrong. St. Andrews needs a locally-controlled Board of Trustees, which is what we had for 105 years, and the community supported it.
Kit Sherrill.
I'm going to substitute my wife.
Wife's choice, sir.
I'm accustomed to being online to do something and have everybody assume it's Kit. But today, you get me. When I entered the room here this morning, and by the way, my name is Lee, L-E-I-G-H, Sherrill, S-H-E-R-R-I-L-L, and I'm speaking for both Christopher, known as Kit, and myself. When I entered the room this morning, I was asked if I were for or against, and I said neither. I am asking for amendment. And I would hope that in our community, we can get beyond the for or against. It makes the community very uncomfortable and get to the best resolution we can to this situation. Over the several years of discussion about the closing of the emergency room at St. Andrews Hospital and therefore the loss of hospital status, we believe we heard much of the time that some beds for rehabilitation and palliative care would remain. This did not happen. To our knowledge, there are no overnight beds at the resulting St. Andrews campus. We also remember some discussion about beds being made available at St. Andrews Village Inn for rehabilitation and palliative care. But to our knowledge, that did not happen. We ask why these additional changes to our availability of care occurred. We posit that on this peninsula, where many people are older, I might add, old, we especially need to be able to visit our loved ones who are working to get better and thus need visits to cheer them on and to visit our loved ones as their lives draw to a close. With no public transportation among the towns now offering such care and only limited taxi service travel to Damascata, Augusta, Brunswick, Portland, Lewiston, is very difficult for those who no longer drive or drive only locally. To have various therapies available at St. Andrews campus is convenient, but we ask that strong consideration be given to returning overnight beds to St. Andrews campus for rehabilitation care, palliative care, and perhaps even for respite care. Thank you.
Mary Conley.
I'm a resident of Booth Bay Harbor. I'm reading for Dr. David Resicott, who cannot attend today. Thank you for your examination of the facts surrounding the closure of St. Andrews Hospital in Booth Bay Harbor. I have been waiting to write this letter to someone who can make a difference for the healthcare of the people of the Booth Bay Peninsula. I am passionate about this issue and view this correspondence to be among the most important of my career. I am six-month resident of Booth Bay Harbor, residing in Virginia during the winter months. My wife and I had planned to move to Booth Bay Harbor year-round, but have put those plans on hold since the hospital closure. I am a retired family physician. Much of my career was spent in the United States Navy. I also had several years of private practice experience in rural north and central Massachusetts, as well as several months locum tenens experience at two locations in rural Maine. My Navy experience includes that of being medical director of two hospitals, where I was responsible for all medical services, including the emergency department. I have been responsible for 24-hour emergency services at three locations and have personally stood in-house watch for years as the sole physician in the emergency room and often the only physician in hospital. In my last Navy position as medical officer for Surface Forces Atlantic Fleet, I was responsible for manning, equipping, training, and maintaining the medical departments onboard all surface ships of the Atlantic Fleet, including amphibious ships, which were ready as hospital ships during the Second Gulf War. I present all of this not by way of self-aggrandizement, but to underscore that I know something about prehospital and emergency care, especially in rural or isolated environments. The closure of St. Andrews Hospital by Lincoln County Healthcare is certainly not about improving the healthcare of the residents of the Booth Bay Peninsula. It is clearly motivated to improve the economic viability of Miles Hospital by guaranteeing full in-house census and improving reimbursement rates due to the hijacking of St. Andrews' critical access hospital status. It is clearly counterintuitive and disingenuous to state that residents are better served by having fewer hospital beds, no emergency room on the peninsula, no site for evaluation of urgent problems outside of urgent care hours, no skilled nursing facility beds, a far greater burden regarding cost and time involved in transportation to off-peninsula ERs for local emergency medical services, and apparently, no influence over the process of decision-making that brought all this to pass. The Booth Bay Peninsula deserves better. Clearly, 25 beds for the entire county will prove insufficiency. Skilled nursing beds are also needed. Don? I can't close any.
Thank you. I'll let you go to the end of the paragraph. Thank you. And you're more than welcome to leave the letter. Appreciate it. Lorna Durfee.
My name is Lorna Durfee, and I was born at St. Andrews Hospital. The reason I'm up here today is I'm very concerned about the service delivery to the patients in this community. And I'm a little nervous speaking, but basically, what I wanted to say is that I think what we're all talking about is the accessibility and the service delivery to the patients on the peninsula. We have a lot of elderly people, and some are visitors and residents, and a lot of people here are poor. And for some of them, getting to another hospital is very difficult. So, I guess my point is with prolonged delays and transportation issues and traveling great distances, if somebody has a critical care need, I don't know why we can't keep St. Andrews in business. My sister basically had some heart issues about five years ago. And I believe that if St. Andrews wasn't available for her, that the outcome could have been a lot different. So, my question in the end of this is, is it more cost-effective to spend money supporting EMS and transporting people with lifelike, or to consider, you know, other ways to deal with this? You know, some people, long-distance inpatient hospital stays, it's very difficult to get there. So, I just want, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Durfee, right?
Yes.
Sure. It's a, I believe it's D-U-R-F-E-E. Ms. Rhoda Weyer, where?
I read that a great first time.
Weyer, okay. Have to learn.
My name is Rhoda Weyer, W-E-Y-R, despite the pronunciation. And I'm here to plead for both more beds, or some beds, since we don't have any, and also for 24/7 use of, whether you call it urgent care or emergency room, I don't care. But it is too often, especially with a population like ours, necessary to get some kind of medical care very fast. There isn't time to figure out whether you have to go all the way to Miles or who the hell is going, sorry, who the hell is going to take you to Miles and what is going to happen then. It happens that I have a daughter who, at the age of 20, had a stroke. And so, I know firsthand that there is a very limited time in which help can be given for something like that. And there are undoubtedly many other situations similar to that that happens to be the one that's my nightmare. And the idea of somebody having a stroke or something needed between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM, and, oh, just wait, they'll open, is just unconscionable. The last time I was in New York City, I happened to stumble upon one of seven in Manhattan, seven urgent care centers that are open 24/7. And I went in to ask them, how can you do this? How do you staff this? And they said, we have very good professional nurse assistants and associate, I forget the name of the other level, but you all probably know it. And if it happens that somebody comes in when one of the doctors is not here, because the doctors are not here all the time, we know, we have somebody who knows exactly what is needed and can deal with it and get somebody to the hospital or get a doctor here. Those doctors are on call, even if they're not here, and they will get here. Now, this is New York City, where there are hospitals every 20 blocks, and still, they can afford to do this. And somebody, when they heard me rant about this, said, oh, well, in New York, you have a population. Well, we have a population too. And our population is considerably older on the whole than New York, and we need that 24/7. God help the person who has an emergency between 8:00 and 8:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Leonard. It's going to happen eventually. Debbie Murray. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Barbara Leonard, and I live in Booth Bay Harbor. Spell my last name, L-E-O-N-A-R-D. In 1997, St. Andrews entered into an affiliation with Maine Health. It also acquired the designation of a critical access hospital. This program requires the hospital to have an emergency care room 24/7. The affiliation between the two entities made St. Andrews a wholly-owned subsidiary of Maine Health, but committed to maintain at a minimum 24-hour emergency services in the Booth Bay region as part of the Maine Health system. In 2007, Maine Health created Lincoln County Healthcare to serve as parent corporation for St. Andrews and Miles Hospitals. Lincoln County Health's powers over St. Andrews would mirror those of Maine Health, including election of St. Andrews Board of Trustees, management teams, and medical staffs. However, Miles' management was largely placed in control. This governance structure was not contemplated when St. Andrews initially agreed to join Maine Health in 1997. In 2010, Lincoln County Healthcare scaled back St. Andrews surgical and acute inpatient programs. In 2012, outpatient surgery was dropped. Citizens questioned these decisions and, asking if the hospital was going to close, were assured time and time again it was not planned. Despite the significant impact this would have on the community, the decision was made in a closed and non-transparent way, and in spite of St. Andrews retaining its primary purpose of maintaining the hospital through an amendment that was reflected in their articles of incorporation. We're a group of vibrant communities comprised of Booth Bay, Booth Bay Harbor, Southport, East Booth Bay, Squirrel Island, and numerous other islands in the surrounding areas. We have three large shipyards and numerous other businesses related to the sea. We are home to Bigelow Research Laboratories and the coastal Maine Botanical Gardens. The Booth Bay region is home to a large retiree population year-round, and during the summer months, we are the destination of many families and daily visitors. Booth Bay and Booth Bay Harbor are the focal points of the area. We have a Coast Guard station, hospital docks, helipad, and we are able to serve medical problems from boats and the islands off the shore, which are brought to our hospital dock. People and families living in the outlying areas of East Booth Bay, Southport, Ocean Point, and Barter's Island can be serviced by our ambulance and hospital to be treated and stabilized and shipped to a large facility if necessary, saving both time and miles. I drove the round trip from Ambulance Barn to these areas. They all averaged 15 miles, then another 20 to 30 minutes to Miles Hospital or midcoast. In some cases, a further swaying bumpy ride may not be in the best entrance of the page. We want to have more input in our future and create a better understanding between the community and Lincoln County Healthcare. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We're going to, we're at a point, we're going to have to take a few-minute break right Ms. Graves, is that you? Okay. Well, we'll do one more right now. Debbie Graves.
My name's Debbie Graves, G-R-A-V-E-S. I am a resident of Booth Bay Harbor, and I am a retired nurse. For over 25 years, I worked both in the Miles system and St. Andrews in many of the local, actually, Waldorbor. I worked at the family center there, so I've been around for a while. There's two things I wanted to talk about. The first thing is that I have no insurance, and that is very scary after having insurance all these years with the hospitals. That's one of the reasons why I went into the medical field, is because I knew you're covered for your whole life when you work in a medical office or facility. I fell about six weeks ago. And knowing that if I called my doctor and I went in to see my doctor, and he would say, yeah, I'm going to send you over to have an x-ray, it would have cost me a third of what it would to go through the emergency room. They couldn't see me. There were no appointments available. So, I'm hemming and hawing, you know, what am I going to do? They assured me over at the Family Care Center that this new urgent care center is not an emergency room. It's not going to charge you what you would be charged if you went to an emergency room. So, I was saying, okay, well, I got to have this checked out. I went over. The people checking me in assured me also that the cost was not going to be near what it would be if I went to an emergency room. So, I was taken care of, and I went home, and I get the bill, $1,000. I went in, the level, there's four different levels that they tell you you are. I was a level three, I mean, four. Sorry, wait a minute, excuse me. Yes, I was a level four, which is the lowest. So, it was $96 to go in. I said, wow, that's great, $96. Well, then, I'm looking further on my bill, and because I did have a fracture, they changed me to a level three and tacked on another $300. So, I So I just, I think, falsifying what it's going to cost for somebody to go over there. I was very disturbed that it cost me, it's going to cost me $1,000 to have that taken care of. The other thing is, that I wanted to mention, was I was on the ambulance service for several years here in the harbor, maybe 10 years. And we are now, last year, in the Down East Magazine, I think it was, is that Booth Bay Harbor is now a vacation destination. It's not just to go on a vacation. People come here, came here because they knew we had a hospital around here. You know, we go from 6,000 year-round residents to 50,000 in the summer. What are we going to do with these people? Where are they going to go? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to start a break right now. I'll come back on in a few minutes and tell you exactly how long that'll last. I apologize for not being able to guess at this point. Thank you. I've got four people that have signed up right now to speak, and what we're going to do is go through those four basically to 12:30, and then take a break from 12:30 to 1:30, because we had some people that scheduled themselves at the appropriate time on the agenda, which is at 1:30. And just in case they're coming, we want to be able to do that. So we'll break, after we get done the folks that signed up, for about an hour, and then we'll continue. But my fair estimate is, we won't be here much past 2:00, 2:30 at the most. So at this time, I'd like Jane Good. Come up, please.
Thank you. My name is Jane Good, just plain good, no E. And this is probably the best Christmas present any of us in this community could have today, is having, allowing us to have this hearing and being heard, so thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Name is Jane Good. I'm confused, saddened, appreciative, and hopeful. I have a lot of mixed emotions today. I'm confused because I have in my hands two letters from the Governor LaPage and Mary Mayhew, who were sent to me after we went to visit with the Governor and the Attorney General's Office to express our concerns that there should be an opportunity for the people of the Booth Bay region to be heard before Maine Health and Lincoln County Health closed our hospital. We were told in these letters that there was nothing that could be done. I'm very saddened by the fact that this allowed Maine Health to dismantle our hospital, eliminate our emergency room, eliminate our hospital beds, and eliminate many year-round jobs, such that we have little to nothing left today. I'm appreciative that you have come to the Booth Bay Peninsula, where the impact of these decisions is most significant. I am hopeful that, having heard the negative impacts these changes are having on the cost and the quality of care, you will reserve some, if not all, of these changes. Once this hearing was announced, I did some research on the Certificate of Need. The Certificate of Need application's simplified review process requires that the applicant address certain issues regarding cost and quality of care, which directly apply to our situation. The first issue is whether the proposed changes will result in no or minimal additional expenses to the public or to the healthcare facilities' clients. Number one, the cost for commuting to and from other hospitals for families forced to travel for healthcare will be increased. The skilled nursing beds are reestablished. The beds will be significantly more expensive because of the critical access hospital funding has been given to Miles Hospital. The ambulance costs have risen, which you've heard, to the tune of $450,000 per year. Property taxes have increased. The elimination of job has had an impact on our local economy, and property values have decreased. And even St. Andrews Village, not having a hospital close to that, might impact viability of the village as well. Now, the second issue is whether the proposed changes will significantly improve, or, in the alternative, not significantly adversely affect the health and welfare of any person currently being served by the healthcare facility. The 25 skilled nursing hospital beds for residents in the Booth Bay region have been eliminated. In addition, 13 of the 38 available at Miles to handle the additional capacity of the Booth Bay residents has been eliminated. These actions left 25 beds available for the entire county. You will hear from people here today who have already experienced the negative impact on their health and welfare due to this bed shortage. I'm going to skip the dangerous roads. You've heard about them. I encourage you to drive them. You can come over on the tip of Southport Island, on my island, and drive them, and the phone reception is ridiculous. You will lose reception many times. You've already heard statistics.
They've had me in. Pam Reed. Rachel Tibbetts.
Hello, my name is Rachel Tibbetts, and I live in East Booth Bay. And in October, I could not get an appointment with my physician, so I ended up going to the urgent care clinic. I was there for about three hours, and when I finally did get my bill, it was interesting because I had 2, 3, and 4 on my statement. The statement was over $1,100, and they didn't figure out what I had. In the meantime, while I was in there, they were calling around, looking for beds for people that needed them. Miles was full, had a waiting list. Parkview in Brunswick was also full and had a waiting list. That left Midcoast, that only had a few rooms available, and Maine Medical. And that was kind of discouraging. And I actually brought my dog today, because here on the peninsula, we have 24/7 emergency care for our animals, but not for us. And they also have beds, which we do not have. And this winter, when everyone really gets the flu or anything else, we have no place to go. And being out on Ocean Point, you're even more isolated, because there's less than 20 families that live there year-round. So I really feel that this community needs to keep the beds that we have to be able to utilize them. Thank you.
And Thomas, Thomas Tim, Tim Viner? Tavener. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I have trouble with it, too. Hi, I'm Tom Tavener. I'm a local attorney here. I've been around a good bit of the century and before that. First thing I want to do is to tell you an experience we had, and this happened when my son was, Tommy, was about eight years old, and we were off on a cruise on our sailing boat, and he'd had a treatment with Tetracycline, I think it was. And nobody had told us that it made him susceptible to sunlight. Well, he got out in the sun, and all of a sudden, his fever shot up. He was burning up, and he went below, and he was thrashing around, he was in pain. So we immediately headed for home. We pulled up to the St. Andrews float, Miles, I don't believe, has a float, and they immediately took care of him and put him in the hospital, and after a couple of days, everything calmed down, they gave him an antidote for it. That could not have been done if St. Andrews had not been available and had not had a marine facility. Now, what's going to happen to the people that live on Squirrel Island and on the other islands out here if St. Andrews is not, has not have an emergency room, is beyond me? And they don't have any beds and so forth and so on, you've heard about all that. Now, the second thing I want to talk about, and I want to stay within my time limit, is the legal situation. In 1996, there was a definitive agreement signed, which created the situation that we've now got. In that definitive agreement, and I have copies here, it said, "Without any question, St. Andrews was to remain a full hospital with beds and rehab and so forth." It's all defined. "Unless and until the Board of St. Andrews Hospital decided otherwise." Now, one of the first things they did was to, in 2008, was to combine the Boards of St. Andrews and Miles. This meant that no longer was there an independent Board of Directors of St., Board of Trustees of St. Andrews Hospital. They were combined boards, and from that point on, in my opinion, contractually, this could not legally take place. There was no independent Board of St. Andrews Hospital devoted to St. Andrews, and there could have been no decision made by that board that the emergency room was no longer needed. Now, that's my, and I have copies of the definitive agreement, that part of it that is relevant, which I'd like to leave with the Board. And I want to thank you very, very much for allowing us to present our views and the legal situation, and this is the portion that I'm referring to, and there's copies for everybody, if you want to read it. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes everybody I have that's signed up at this point. There's one more. Ms. Jeanie Hamrin? Well, if there's anybody that wants to speak, and somebody keeps raising their hand, why don't you come forward? Okay. I'm quite certain the mistake has got to be mine, anyway. Okay.
I'm Penny Toomith, T-H-U-M-I-T-H, and I run the St. Andrews Auxiliary Thrift Shop. And I was looking around here this morning, and I didn't see the poor and elderly here speaking, any of them speaking. And I'm here for the skilled beds, and it's the poor and elderly that I'm worried about in this community, that have to go elsewhere, have to travel elsewhere. I'm sorry that other people have to travel elsewhere, too, but some people can afford it, other people can't. They have no automobiles, they can't get where they want to go very easily, and so their loved ones are somewhere else without their company. And I was lucky, I was, my husband died in 2001 at St. Andrews, and it was the year before the palliative care room. But he received the palliative care that he had to have, and so did the rest of the family. And I would like to see skilled beds up at the village, so that everyone else can have them. That's all. Thanks. T-H-U-M-I-T-H. Toomith, Toomith or not Toomith?
And, go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Jeanie Hamrin, H-A-M-R-I-N. I am on the Board of the Booth Bay Health and Wellness Foundation. I am very active on the Elder Empowerment Committee and Thriving in Place Group for the county. I work at Unity College, and I hold a doctoral degree. I am speaking in favor of restoring 24-hour healthcare access and hospital beds at St. Andrews, so our residents can receive rehabilitation, recuperation, and end-of-life care. I question if it was ethical and/or legal for a nonprofit chartered to serve the residents of Booth Bay Peninsula to be allowed to merge with another hospital and move all of our patient critical services off the peninsula. Booth Bay region has a greater than 25% of elderly, we're number one in the state. Transportation for frail elderly is a huge barrier, both economically and mobility-wise, to get to appointments off the peninsula. And research tells us that these people have a higher proportion of chronic conditions that require timely and frequent care. If all, after all testimony is heard, the state decides that the CON is granted, we ask that these conditions be attached. We should have 15 to 25 local skilled nursing transition post-acute discharge rehab beds at St. Andrews, so that we will have a local place for our citizens. We would like urgent care center to be open seven days, 24 hours, for extended coverage for the majority of injuries, pains, et cetera, that don't require emergency care, but can be served in our own community. We would like to have some defrayment of costs of the ambulance care. Then, in closing, on a personal note, my husband has been a patient of Lincoln Medical Partners and St. Andrews Hospital. He has been harmed and not helped by these corporate reorganizations. He has Lyme disease, which went undiagnosed for, well, about six, seven months, until he was paralyzed with axonal neuropathy and had blood problems. After two years, he has been left with bouts of MRSA, bacteremia, skin infections, and permanent nerve damage to his hands. The most recent event, in August 2012, I took him to the ER at St. Andrews, when they were still open, and the ER doctor wanted to put him overnight in St. Andrews, because he needed repeated blood tests to make sure that the MRSA was not back. Anyway, they called, and they were told they could not admit him to St. Andrews. He had to go to Miles. Carl did not want to go to Miles, so he went to Midcoast, where he was there for five days. I had to travel up and down through the Wiscasset traffic, which, of course, is horrible in the summer, but it would be worse going on the icy roads now. All they did was draw blood every single morning and check to see the levels. He could have been taken care of at St. Andrews, it would have been a win for them, it would have been five hospital days. He had intravenous feedings and the blood drawn. That was it. I think that cases like this can certainly be taken care of at our local hospital, and they should be. I ask you to have Lincoln Healthcare publicly disclose the reasons for how they are improving our facilities and care for our community. Thank you.
And that concludes this period of time relating to testimony by individual members of the public, and we'll convene again as per the agenda at 1:30. Thank you.
You have to let me turn on the microphone, and then you can turn the power on. Well, we're going to practice for next time. It's all my fault.
I appreciate that.
Is it much louder in your ears with the?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, we're back in session for the public hearing regarding Lincoln County Healthcare's reorganization. reorganization of Lincoln Health. And our first speaker will be Chris McCarthy from Bath Iron Works.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris McCarthy. I'm the manager of Integrated Health Services at Bath Iron Works. I'm going to actually read a little bit today, but, which is unusual for me. For about two decades now, Bath Iron Works has expressed the position that we need to assess our medical industry infrastructure and make changes necessary to increase the efficiency of the system and eliminate overcapacity and waste. And fairly recently, we said exactly that at a different certificate of need hearing when we were talking about something in the other side of our backyard, as we were trying to take a look at what needs to be done. So, oh, I'm very sorry. Is this better? I'll try to hold it up here. I don't use mics usually, so I'll try today to use the mic for you. For two decades, Bath Iron Works, I'm going to say this again for you, that we've been expressing the need to address overcapacity in the system and the infrastructure of the medical industry in Maine, and particularly in our region. And the focus for us has always been on efficiency and assessing true capacity and true need in the system and trying to bring about efforts to right-size the system. Back in 2006, 2007, Miles and St. Andrews, in collaboration with Maine Health, made what we believe is a wise decision to merge administrative oversight into one entity, Lincoln County Healthcare, and forego the building of a new facility in the area. We know that that was a hard decision, but it was a good decision from our perspective.
Did you say wise or no?
Wise. Wise, yes. Yep. I am certain there's some wild elements in there, but it was wise in our perspective. Further, the consolidation of the services that established a single acute care hospital, functioning as a critical access hospital, has increased efficiency across the region and demonstrated early flattening of the commercial cost associated with the provision of care in this area. This is obviously of great importance to a company like BIW, who spends well over $1 million a year out in this region. The payer community, and when I say the payer community, I'm not talking about insurance companies. I'm talking about businesses, local businesses, who provide insurance to their employees, have been asking the medical industry for quite a long time to make these kinds of hard decisions that are being made here, have been made here, to improve the value of the medical care and the spend on medical care in the area. So, consistent with the purposes that are established in the incorporation of Lincoln Health, which I believe is part of the discussion today, the shift to a system that's focused on delivering new service lines dedicated to sustaining, building and sustaining health, rather than a primary focus on illness in the system, requires things like new organizational models, different facility approaches, and new processes in the care system. This, of course, means change. So, Bath Iron Works understands, anytime you have a situation like this, you have this kind of a conversation, it's difficult. We're now having conversations about needs versus wants. We're having conversations about change versus status quo. We're talking about community icons. And anytime that happens, it generates a lot of emotion, and it generates a lot of passion. As well, because we're talking about change, there's always fear that's associated with change. And we get that. But it is necessary in the system to start addressing these things and to look for what changes we can do across the system to improve efficiency and also generate this new service line of health. So, as a region and a state, we have to go through, achieve this higher efficiency model, create higher value in the system for the delivery of care, whether it's delivering health or delivering illness intervention. And we need a system focused on that health delivery model, because that's where we're going to get the highest value for our spend in the system. BIW supports Lincoln Health in its effort to create a higher-value system through the consolidation. We look forward to seeing the continuing work to maximize the value of the care delivered in this region, and we expect that the CON unit will establish future performance expectations that are consistent with the goals established in the incorporation documents for Lincoln Health. And then we just want to say, we know this is a hard lift. We know it's difficult, and we appreciate folks taking and making the effort to make these changes.
We're going to continue on with the public comment period at this point, and we're going to ask for Laura Perkins. As again, what we discussed this morning, if you could spell your last name so we can make sure we get that correctly, although I'm betting we can do Perkins pretty well.
Yeah.
But thank you. And to everybody else, if you're having a hard time hearing, if you just sort of raise your hand, we can adjust the volume a little bit. It just gets very interesting on the transcript when you have people speaking out from the area. So, it would improve everybody's ability to understand what people are saying, and we'll adjust the volume accordingly. Thank you.
Do you need me to say Laura Perkins? Are we good? Okay. One thing I want to say before I hadn't realized was, in the bold print right here at 11:30, you did a nice job, by the way, it says, "Directly affected by the review." What you do is directly affected by what happened here in Booth Bay Harbor? I just don't understand that part of it. But I can go on with my story, but I just want to, are we talking about directly here in Booth Bay for this?
I think it's more of a term of art, it's probably, sort of describes they qualify as groups of people can sign up.
I understand. Okay. I would have guessed Hodgson Yod, or somebody that was local might have been a better Booth Bay Harbor representative for your cause. But anyhow, I want to go on with us is, we grew up here in Booth Bay Harbor, children, death, families, everything. And my story happened after the closing of the hospital, and I thankfully was out of town when it happened. My daughter was in Boston with us, and she's had shrimp many times, been to Cappy's in Camden, eaten here. And we're at the dinner table, and she has an allergic reaction. What do you do? You know, there's only so many things you can do to get treatment for that, and we were able to get to a hospital after 8:00. And they have a four-hour antilactic where you get hurt after, and you have to be observed and treated. A lot of people come to Booth Bay Harbor for our selfish, our restaurants, and enjoy a great meal, and it's a common reaction. It's a small peninsula. Luckily, you guys traveled on a road today that was safe. It's often not. Our incident happened after 8:00 PM, and I was just thankful not to be here when it happened, since this happened. Thank you.
Just to understand, explain what persons directly affected by the review are. Those are, there's a, in the statute, it describes, it's basically five individuals that live in the area that's affected by a particular review, or people that basically pay for insurance that can sign up. So, there's no, I don't believe Maine Health asked BIW to come, and BIW's not representing Maine Health or Lincoln County, just so everybody knows that they're representing themselves at that point. So, other than the four individuals who spoke on behalf of Lincoln County Healthcare this morning, everyone else has been speaking on their own behalf. Okay? Ms. Ira Machon? I'm sorry, that would be Mr. Ira Machon.
I'm retired Coast Guard, and I was the harbor master here for seven years in Booth Bay Harbor. The big thing here is the location. I don't know why we didn't merge Miles to Booth Bay Harbor. We can be reached by land, sea, and air. We got everything here. And as harbor master and Coast Guard station here, it's so important to get anybody injured off a boat into this dock, which we always do, but once they get to the dock and get in the ambulance, now they've got to go to Miles, even though there's a doctor in the urgent care. It doesn't make sense to me. And a little bit about the roads, if you go up 27, and an ambulance is behind you with the screaming lights and all that on it, where are you going to pull over? You can pull over enough so half of your car is in the road, but then if you've got buses, motorhomes, they're lucky to just get their front tire off the road. But if you go on Route 1, you look, and the breakdown lane is big enough to pull over. But it's not on 27. 27 is dangerous to be up there, and just, I just want you to, when you go up there, think that ambulance behind you, and you've got to pull over, and you'll say, "I can't get off the road." And that's pretty embarrassing, and you don't know what the cops might do if you can't get over. So, and with all the shipbuilding in East Booth Bay, and, I mean, if we have, in the summertime, the activity here is wild. We have passenger boats, we've got tour boats. If we have an accident on one of those tour boats, we've got 70 or 80 people on it, how are they going to have enough ambulances to get to Damascata? And without any bids in St. Andrews, they'll have to go to Damascata. It just, it just doesn't make sense to me. I'll tell you, I don't feel safe living in Booth Bay Harbor.
Seeing as though it's just before 1:45, we have just a few people left to sign up. Susan Duckworth will be next. But if anybody had anything they wanted to say, and it's here, this is our last call to sign up. Ms. Duckworth?
Susan Duckworth, Booth Bay. I have a 67-year-old cousin who has cerebral palsy, and one of the modifying conditions for him is to be very fearful and anxious and panic in unknown places and with unknown people. He's never lived anywhere but on this peninsula, where everything is familiar to him and all the people. Before St. Andrews closed, in the last few years, he's had a couple of procedures, and one required an overnight stay. I was allowed to stay in the room with him at St. Andrews because there were enough beds, and that kept him calm while he was there. Also, the staff was known to him, and that made him more comfortable as well. Taking him to Miles, where he's unfamiliar with staff members, and there are not, certainly not enough room for me to stay with him, is going to prove very difficult for me. I know there are many others in this region who have mental or physical disorders. Being at Miles will be difficult, both for them and for their caregivers, especially in an emergency. Thank you.
Captain Schmidt?
It's S-C-H-M-I-D-T. I'm a member of the Wellness Foundation and a resident of Booth Bay. In the testimony that's been presented today, it has little said about the legitimacy and the operation of LCH. As of 2007 and '08, that entity was formed without certificate of need or hearings. In my opinion, therefore, it should be ill-begotten and therefore should be disengaged from our peninsula and have our hospital back under our own community control. Thank you.
My name is Skip Humphrey. I taught school in all four towns on this peninsula, and I care very much for its people. In 2009, Captain Ted Schmidt had a stroke. I got him into the car, and I got him to St. Andrews Emergency Room in 10 minutes. Both doctors told me that if I had not gotten him there so soon, he could have been a vegetable. He is a well-recovered and fine contributing citizen of our community and on the Board of the Health and Wellness Foundation. Maine Health, Lincoln County Health, has taken away this possibility. From many points on this peninsula, it is from 45 minutes to more than an hour from Miles Hospital. As four towns, we have built a great YMCA with local funds. In fact, we built that hospital. They didn't build it, and they didn't pay for it. Had Maine Health asked, instead of its secrecy, we could have stepped forward financially and avoided all this mess. The lives of our citizens are now in danger. Maine Health and Lincoln County Health should not be granted this certificate of need.
At this time, that concludes any testimony from the public. And we're going to finish with some closing remarks from Lincoln County Healthcare. Before I do, I wanted to point out that we brought on the back table there, on top of the agendas with the address, some pieces of paper. I think you could, if you wanted to take them, you're more than welcome to take them and give them to people. If they wanted to have a form to write it down, they can mail it to us directly. Since we've already used the piece of paper, you might as well take them if you have them. And so, just wanted to say, before we get to the closing remarks, I wanted to thank everybody for coming out today, and it's part of the certificate of need process. We encourage and appreciate public discourse and discussion on these matters, and thank you very much for coming. And we'll end with Lincoln County Healthcare.
So, thank you, Mr. Garmono. Again, my name is Frank McGinty. Since I didn't spell it the first time, it's M-C-G-I-N-T-Y. I work for Maine Health, and I've been asked by my colleagues to provide these remarks at the end of what has been a long day. I want you to know that we've listened very carefully to everything that's been said today. And while there are comments that have been made with which we strongly disagree, we certainly, for example, do not believe that there was any bad faith or illegality in the development of the plans that have been implemented here in Lincoln County. We do recognize the validity of many of the concerns expressed. Frankly, they're the same concerns that the Lincoln County Board, Lincoln County Management Team debated as they came to the difficult decisions they did to take the actions that are the subject of so many of your comments and concerns. We are engaged in discussions with the Wellness Foundation, with many members of this community, about ways in which we might address those concerns. As was mentioned earlier, Lincoln County Healthcare has already filed a letter of intent informing the Department of its desire to create additional skilled nursing beds here in the Booth Bay region. Exactly how we do that is what's now under study, and we'd welcome whatever input, whatever assistance members of this community might be able to provide so that we can present to the Department, as soon as we can, a certificate of need application that it will have to approve in order for us to meet that need. Similarly, there have been many, many discussions between physicians and other Similarly, there have been many, many discussions between physicians and other leaders of Lincoln County Healthcare with the folks who operate the local ambulance service. Lincoln County Healthcare has provided substantial financial support to the ambulance service, continues to provide training and other types of technical support to the ambulance service to try to assure that when people do need to be transported from these communities at this end of the peninsula to Damascata or to Portland for care, that they get the quickest and best care available. I want you to understand one of the things that several people said at the start of this proceeding. Trying to find a way to balance the community's interest in readily accessible care, high-quality care, and affordable care is a very, very difficult thing to do. From Maine Health's perspective, that's best done by local boards, like the Lincoln County Healthcare Board, which is composed of people from this county, from Lincoln County. As Jim Donovan mentioned earlier, the Lincoln County Board was composed 50% of representatives of the prior St. Andrews Board, 50% of the prior Miles Board, people who live and work in these communities. And they wrestled with this question, how do we provide the best possible response to the people with whom we live and work? To our families, to our parents, to our children. And they came to a set of answers in entirely good faith that we are now attempting to make work as best we can for you and the people that you love. And again, I would ask you to keep that in mind as you try to work with Jim Donovan, and Mark Foray, Jeff Curtis, and Bill Logan, and all of the other people who have one interest here, and that's to do the best they possibly can for this community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinty. That's pretty much the end of the public hearing. Just remind you that I haven't actually said the address, so I'll do that one time, as I promised six hours ago, or four, anyway. Division Licensing and Regulatory Services, Healthcare Oversight Unit, State House Station 11, 41 Anthony Avenue, and it's Augusta, Maine, 04333-0011. And we need those in before the 22nd of January at 5:00. And thank you very much.